Roll call please, Mrs. Garza.
Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Seberg.
Here.
Mr. Demaria.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Hollensworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Ms. Osorio Flores. Ms. Tanoli.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Now our two student representatives are both representing Osborne on the lacrosse field tonight, which is why they aren't here, so we hope they're doing well and we thank them for their service. And before we move on, I see Councilman David Farah Delahi is here, so thank you, sir, for being here. And is there anyone else here? Can't see behind the mask. Nope, I think, see some community members out there, some of my neighbors. Good to see you. With that, we'll move on to the agenda. Dr. Newman, your favorite part. Are there any additions and corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. Inside joke. Next on the agenda, superintendents announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Bradenworth, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. Good evening, other members of the board, and yes, I am here to present our spotlights and announcements for tonight. We will begin with the 2021 VSB, VSB A Business Honor Roll, which is the Virginia School Boards Association. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association, or VSB A, gives school divisions the opportunity to recognize local businesses for their support through the VSB A Business Honor Roll program. Businesses, large and small, corporate-owned or family-run, play a key role in supporting our community and especially our schools. Our local businesses and other organizations contribute to our school division in many ways, including helping schools with in-kind or financial contributions, donating to scholarship programs, supporting extracurricular activities, offering internship opportunities, volunteering in the schools, and sponsoring field trips. This type of support is invaluable to us. While there are certainly many businesses in our great community that we would like to recognize, tonight, we would like to honor three for their ongoing support of Manassas City Public Schools. At the March 23 meeting, the school board approved Resolution 2021-03, naming the following organizations to the 2021 VSB A Business Honor Roll. And you all can come join us now. Novant Health UVA Health System, the Prince William Health District, and the William E. Carlson Charitable Fund. We are fortunate to have Ms. Kim Galansky with Novant and Dr. Allison Anser from the Health District here tonight. Now ask them to come forward at this time. We would like to take a moment, you can go straight there, yeah. I do have certificates for them, so. We would like to take a moment to publicly thank the hospital and the Health District for the amazing partnership and efforts they made in offering vaccination clinics for all of our employees. Not only did they assist us, but they also worked with our neighboring divisions as well. The amount of coordination it took was not an easy task, but they pulled it off and received glowing remarks from our staff. Thank you both for all you have done and continue to do to keep our community healthy. Thank you so much. Yeah, that's good. Everybody got their masks on, I get a good picture of you. There we go, one, two, three. We'll do one more, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you so much. I would like to note that Bill and Teresa Carlson from the William E. Carlson Charitable Fund could not be here tonight due to a previous engagement, but we also want to share our appreciation to them for the generous donations they made to assist us with distance learning and their continued support of our instructional programs through their work with the MCPS Education Foundation. I have a certificate for them and will be sure to share that with them. All right. So our next recognitions for tonight, the Support Employee Excellence Award. And you all can have a seat right, yeah. Each year, the school division recognizes a support staff member who demonstrates leadership and goes above and beyond to provide outstanding service to the students, staff, parents, and the community. Tonight, we will honor the following for being recognized at each of their schools. And you can see them on the screen. Amanda Davidson, Library Assistant at Weems Elementary School. Ms. Davidson completes all of her assigned roles and tasks as the school library assistant. However, she continuously looks for opportunities to support the school's vision of lifting learners to new heights. Ms. Davidson demonstrates excellence through her commitment to Weems students and the school. Next, we have Rosemary Davis, who is the Library Assistant at Jenny Dean Elementary School. Ms. Davis has gone the extra mile this year in helping to keep the school running. She's bilingual and has worked all year as the translator in the afternoon and has been a great help to Dean's families and school community. Next, we have Saul Baji, In-School Detention Assistant at Mayfield Intermediate. Mr. Baji goes above and beyond when supporting students. Mr. Baji is always seeking to fulfill Mayfield's mission and vision statements. He takes the words of those statements seriously, puts them into action. Mr. Baji steps up and does whatever is needed so that students can experience success. Next, we have from Metz Middle School, Eliana De Lopez. Ms. Lopez is the heartbeat of the community. On a daily basis, she demonstrates dedication to excellence and service in her role as a translator. Ms. Lopez is professional at all times with staff, families, and students. Teachers rely on Ms. Lopez to provide connection and guidance to the families regarding academic performance. From Round Elementary School, Chana Richet, Administrative Associate and Registrar. Relationships drive the quality of Ms. Richet's efficacy. Behind the excellence that she fosters every day in the school is deep-rooted relationships within that school community. She's a true leader and leads with her daily actions and work ethic. From Transportation, we have Donna Blackwell. She's a special education bus driver. Each day, when her special education students climb onto her bus, she's always greeting them with a smile, welcoming words, and a calm tone. This puts her students at ease. She has always treated her fellow employees, students, and school community with the utmost respect. And next, we have from Hayden Elementary, Yolanda Yerkart. She has been an All-Star this past year. Though she is a Hayden employee, she has been working at Weems with the distribution service since the pandemic started. She has been a big part of the distribution success there, a great team player, always willing to jump into task without hesitation. Ms. Yerkart is always a key worker you can count on to help get the job done. Next, we have our custodian from Osborne High School, Helen Ruffin. Ms. Ruffin makes sure that her area and really any area in which she walks through is clean and sanitized. She is inspiring because she is always smiling, no matter what is going on. She keeps a positive attitude about her work and genuinely shows students and teachers that she cares about the building, the school community, and everyone she encounters. We have Elizabeth Bolts, Elizabeth Bolts, who's a school nurse at Baldwin Elementary and Baldwin Intermediate. The work and contributions of the school nurse, Elizabeth Bolts, were expanded greatly this school year. Nurse Bolts provided strong communication and leadership related to mitigation efforts, contact tracing, and changing public health measures. She is the school nurse to two schools with two student schedules and students aging between pre-K and 6th grade. She cares when there's been a challenge to someone's health and is quick to follow up with them to make sure they have the right aftercare. And we have Kelly Shetzler, school nurse from Hayden Elementary School. Nurse Shetzler does much more than care for the sick at Hayden Elementary. She provides excellent customer service by checking in on staff members when they are sick in the evening and on weekends without being asked. She has kept everyone abreast of the many changes with COVID and is integral to ensuring that the school follows all health and safety protocols. She is an appreciated member of the Hayden family. And so those are all of our nominees tonight, and at this time, I would like to present our winners, and if you all would come back. We have two winners this year, so they're co-sharing this award tonight. But our winners are Elizabeth Bolts from Baldwin Elementary and Baldwin Intermediate and Kelly Shetzler from Hayden Elementary. So as you see, they both will receive a Support Employee Excellence Award winner banner that will hang at their school, so that people know that they work at that location. They have some lovely flowers they are being presented with. Each has received a plaque and a $50 gift certificate to Ashton Family Restaurant. Let's see, the best way to do this, okay, I think I should be able to get everybody, let's try. But we might need to kind of scoot around this way a little bit. You can see everybody's face. Okay, yes. All right, everybody ready? There you go, one, two, three. I know, we got these wonderful masks on, right? One, two, three. Yeah, you go ahead, I know. And Ms. Wingfield noted that you do not have to share the banner, you will each have one at your schools, okay? Thank you, ladies, and congratulations. You can, you can stay. Yeah, because we got the Washington Post. Washington Post? The Washington Post Teacher of the Year is our next recognition. The Washington Post sponsors its Teacher of the Year Award annually to recognize teachers in the Washington DC metropolitan area. Locally, colleagues, students, and parents are given an opportunity to nominate a person from each of our schools who in turn is selected to represent Manassas City Public Schools as our submission to the post. This year, that winner is Mrs. Patricia Smith from Weems Elementary School. Ms. Smith has always had a desire to find alternative ways for kids to learn, whether that involves communication, academics, or dealing with feelings. Her passion for alternative education has led her to become a skilled and multifaceted special educator. Ms. Smith began her teaching career in 1993 as a kindergarten teacher. In 1998, she discovered a passion for helping students with disabilities and became an elementary-age teacher for students with learning disabilities and high-functioning autism spectrum disorder. In 2008, she earned her master's degree in early childhood special education. She's been working in Manassas City Schools for 19 years, teaching early childhood special education, and, that was from 2006 to 2015, and K-4 special education students 1998 to 2005 and 2015 to present. She's motivated by finding and utilizing a variety of resources that may be outside the norm for individual students to learn, to accomplish this task. Ms. Smith has furthered her education in areas that are of specific importance to our learning community. Ms. Smith earned her ESL certificate from George Mason in 2014. She's participated in countless trainings and opportunities aimed at supporting students' social and emotional well-being and developing students' academic ability. Ms. Smith is truly a dedicated professional. Congratulations to you. I know everybody's smiling, big, aren't you? So as you see, she received a banner that will hang at her school. Flowers and a certificate to Ashton Downey as well. Congratulations. And our final one for tonight, the Washington Post Principal of the Year. The Washington Post believes that strong leadership is an essential ingredient of good schools. Each year, they take the opportunity to honor area principals who exhibit good leadership in public schools across the DMV. The MCPS recipient for this year, as you can see, is Dr. Zella Jones. Dr. Jones is the principal of Weems Elementary, so Weems is the doubleheader for tonight. Dr. Jones began her career serving Families of Virginia in 1979 as a teacher of hospitalized adult learners. She began teaching in Manassas at Jenny Dean in 1982. She acquired her master's degree in special education in 97, a certificate of technology in 2001, and a specialist degree in educational leadership in 2004. She served our division as an assistant principal at Osborne High School in 2003 for 10 years, during which time she earned her doctorate in education with a focus on advanced math course and its correlation to male students' post-secondary success. In 2014, she became an elementary school principal. Students and teachers alike benefit from her leadership. Dr. Jones serves the community through various mentorship programs aimed at directing youth to hold themselves in high regard and commit themselves to personal excellence. Under her leadership, teachers are encouraged to foster their own personal growth and develop their PIs, physical, intellectual, emotional, and spiritual, social, self-care domains. Dr. Jones has led staff to continue their excellent record of achievement by nurturing and encouraging personal growth and reflection. Congratulations to you, Dr. Jones. Congratulations, Dr. Jones. And are Weems teachers still here, if you all would like to come up and take a picture together with your principal? They can do without the banner, all right? There you go. This concludes our spotlight for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, spotlight's always great. Next, Board Committee reports. I look to my left, are there any Board Committee reports? Vice Chair Seberg.
I have an academic committee report. The academic committee met April 14 in person in the school board conference room. We reviewed science resource adoption plans for K-12, and it is on the discussion agenda for this evening. We also received an update on summer instruction plans, and those details will be included in the Return to Learn update tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To my right, Ms. Demaria, any Board reports?
No, sir, thank you.
Committee reports?
The Policy Committee met last Wednesday, the 21st, in person in the conference room. We looked at a total of 56 policies, is that how many we looked at? Yeah, sorry, there's a lot of policies, and they kind of tend to run together after a while. So we looked at a total of 56 policies. We'll discuss them in further during the discussion portion of today's agenda.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Stevens. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. We don't have any citizens signed up, but I'm going to make sure there are no citizens who are out there who haven't signed up. Not seeing any. I will move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Sir, I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Demaria, second by Mrs. Williams, that we accept the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, 7-0. The consent agenda is passed. Next up, discussion agenda. We start with old business, Return to Learn. Dr. Newman and I guess Dr. Saunders. Good to see you again.
Good evening, everyone. I think there we go. Good evening, Chairman Williams, Vice Chair Seberg, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to share our Return to Learn update for this evening. The work presented this evening represents work that's happening in every school department, every school, and every area across the division. Some of my colleagues are here with us this evening, but most are watching at other locations to promote social distancing. Our agenda for tonight includes an update on current community data, return to in-person learning, summer 2021 learning, and the MCPS Reimagine and Accelerate Task Force. The Virginia Department of Health publishes the Weekly Transmission Extent Dashboard. This dashboard is intended to help inform state and local officials about the effects of COVID-19 on each region to help them decide whether to act on additional mitigation measures for individual communities. This data is updated regularly, and the most recent update is from April 17, 2021. This graphic shows the current status of COVID-19 in Northern Virginia is fluctuating and considered moderate burden at moderate activity level. The burden and trend scores for the region are both calculated as an average of the composite and trend scores. As of the April 17 update, the composite burden score for Northern Virginia was 15.6, moderate burden. The trend score was 12.9 and is considered fluctuating. The CDC has published a set of indicators for dynamic school decision-making. These indicators and thresholds help communities better understand the risk of introduction and transmission of COVID-19 in schools. There are four categories. They represent low transmission, coded in blue, moderate transmission in yellow, substantial transmission in orange, and high transmission in red. The Virginia Department of Health has updated their graphics to reflect the colors and codes from the CDC. Additionally, metrics are now reported on a seven-day average. The most recent update is dated April 17, 2021. This graphic reflects the combination of core indicators and is representative of our current community transmission rate as reported substantial. This graphic represents the two core indicators. The indicators are the total number of new cases per 100,000 persons in the substantial range and the percentage of PCR tests that are positive, also in the substantial range. This graphic represents the secondary indicators. Secondary indicators include the percent change in new cases as low, the percent change, the percentage of hospital inpatient beds that are occupied as moderate, and the percentage of hospital inpatient beds that are occupied by patients with COVID-19 as low. Currently, our pre-K through 12 learning across the division is happening in both virtual and in-person ways. Approximately 1,800 students are attending hybrid learning in pre-K through 4, while about 1,250 pre-K through 4 students remain fully virtual. We continue to service approximately 109 school-dependent learners in person four days a week, and all of our 5 through 12 students remain in virtual learning. Our teachers and our school staff are working tremendously hard to provide the best learning experiences for every student each day. They are remarkably creative, innovative, flexible, and patient with each and every day and each and every lesson. And with Teacher Appreciation Week coming in the near future, we say we appreciate you. There are many events happening at Osborne High School to conclude the year and celebrate our seniors. The Osborne High School staff welcomes students to join them on Saturday, May 1, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at Osborne High School for a, not a prom, just a walk-through-to-remember, red carpet event for juniors and seniors. Students may come as they are, wear spirit wear, or get dressed up for this event. We will have selfie stations, music, goodies, and professional photographers. In order to maintain social distancing guidelines and to allow the maximum number of students, we must limit attendance to a 20-minute time slot. Multiple students may sign up for the same time slot so that friends may attend together. All attendees must wear masks and practice social distancing. We hope the students will enjoy the opportunity to stop at Osborne, walk through, and have a face, have a fun and safe evening. The senior community scholarship ceremony will be on May 12. The department awards on May 13. Materials collection, May 24 through the 28. The senior drive-through on May 25. And finally, graduation on May 28 at 7:00 PM at Jivilube Live. In an effort to continue to maintain a safe and healthy environment, we remind our parents to assess students daily to ensure they are feeling well and have no symptoms. Each day, we ask you to check for COVID-19 symptoms. If your child has any of these symptoms, anyone in the household is sick, or your child generally doesn't feel well, please keep your child at home. We also ask that you notify your child's school, and if needed, seek medical attention. As the school year comes to a close, we started and we began looking at summer learning for 2021. Summer learning opportunities will take place this summer in an in-person format. Grades K through 4 will focus on reading, and grades 5 through 8 will focus on reading and math. Students grades K through 8 will attend summer learning in person from June 7 through June 25. Schools will be extending invitations to selected students in the near future. At grades 9 through 12, summer learning will be focused on credit recovery and will be virtual through Edmentum. Summer school will be from June 7 through June 11, and an Osborne High School teacher will be assigned to each student to monitor and support progress. We will be offering in-person SOL bootcamps for selected students. Extended school year for our special education students who qualify will be from June 14 to July 8 at Jenny Dean, Baldwin, and Osborne. Eye Ready, K through 8, Imagine Learning, K through 8, for Level 1 and 2 ESOL students, and Schoology for summer enrichment courses, grades K through 12, will also be available to any student. Through this year, we have done many Return to Learn presentations. Feels like a lot of. And are ready to really pivot and start to share the planning and thinking for the fall, for 2122. It's exciting for all of us. And we have talked about how we will reimagine and accelerate this process. We started an instructional task force called Reimagine and Accelerate. This team, facilitated by Dr. Cramp, the Director of Instruction, has been focused around instructional conversations for reimagining and. conversations for reimagining and accelerating learning for all students as we look to return from the pandemic. Planning for next year does require us to comply with the new laws and BDOE guidance for the return in the fall. Senate Bill thirteen oh three, signed by Governor Northam, does require schools to offer in-person instruction for at least the minimum number of required instructional hours during the 2122 school year. This equates to a hundred and eighty days or at least nine hundred and ninety hours of in-person instruction. Divisions should also be prepared for fluctuations in the number of student requests for in-person instruction. This bill does not require divisions to offer virtual option, but does allow us to do that if we choose to. For more information, there is a link for the full bill for your review. Our reimagine and accelerate task force is a group of teachers and administrators and instructional specialists. The purpose of this task force is to collaborate around instructional planning for the next school year. We anticipate that some of our students will have new or widened instructional gaps. This task force is focused on math and literacy, English, language arts instructions, since those skills transcend other contents and build on one another annually. Intervention supports will be identified for some students, but most gaps will need to be addressed in Tier One in the general classroom. So the focus for the group was on Tier One instruction. Some of the topics the team is discussing include needs, schedules, calendar, time, staffing, professional development, and services. As you see on the next several slides, we have a comprehensive, knowledgeable group of educators, including administrators, instructional specialists, and teachers. This slide represents our K-four task force members led by Ms. Stacy Armstrong, Assistant Principal at Baldwin. These are our five through eight task force members led by Ms. Kelly Huntley, Assistant Principal at Mayfield. And finally, our nine through twelve subgroup members are led by Emily Castor, Assistant Principal at Osborne High School. This task force began meeting in February after principals identified members of their school staff to participate. The team has been meeting in both whole and subgroups since mid-February. Initial recommendations from each group were shared with all school instructional staff in early April. All staff had the opportunity to provide feedback to the subgroups. Currently, the subgroups are collaborating about the feedback, receiving and determining revisions, and making some final recommendations. As we look into the fall of 2021, we are currently planning to include both full-time in-person and full-time virtual offerings for the 2122 school year. Students pre-K through twelve will return to school five days a week for in-person instruction. Virtual instruction, for those who elect it, would be through Virtual Virginia. Teachers are provided through Virtual Virginia, and students are given both synchronous and asynchronous instruction through Virtual Virginia teachers. Special education students who require an alternate curriculum would be served by Manassas City Public Schools teachers. Virtual students would still be Manassas City Public students and are included in the ADM, Accountability Student Supports and Services, and for participation in clubs, sports, and athletics, while instructions occur through, instruction occurs through Virtual Virginia. During the month of May, we will be sending out a parent survey to determine how many families are interested in this virtual option.
Chairman Williams, may I add?
Yes, please.
I believe in that the bill, Senate Bill thirteen oh three, does not leave a lot of options for the school board. In order to reach the nine hundred and ninety hours or a hundred and eighty days, it will require a five-day in-person return to school to meet those requirements. We could not develop a hybrid model that would meet that. So I believe that the only thing left that we're going to honor the bill is to determine if we will be offering a virtual option for our families. As it says, you may do that. It doesn't say that you have to. We may still have some families that are not comfortable sending their child back to school, but I feel then, and staff feels, that what's in the best interest of our staff at this point is to allow Manassas City Public Schools teachers to concentrate on the in-person, and at least for next year, we can revisit after, to offer the Virtual Virginia for those families that may choose the Virtual Virginia option for virtual. That is, if the board selects to have a virtual option. The request from myself and the team is to ask the board to make a vote on this during the May eleventh meeting, as we only have one meeting in May, and that way, families can make a decision on what we will be offering, which will be five days of in-person for those that want it. And if there will be a virtual option, it would also allow us time to plan and also give our staff that need to make decisions on what they want to do in the future, because this plan would require everyone to be back in the building to handle the in-person instruction of our students. May eleventh will be a day before contracts go out, so I would like for that decision, if possible, the request for the board to make that decision at the eleventh meeting, so everything's out on the table, so everyone can make an informed choice on what they would like to do going forward.
All right, thank you. I see Mr. Demaria looking. Do you have a question before we get back to Dr. Saunders, or do you want to wait?
Well, as long as he brought all this up, I got to take this off, sorry. It's really nice of the Assembly to give us the option of to do virtual. That's nice of them, since they know exactly what's going on in Manassas and every other district. I believe, as I've stated in the past, that we need to go back five days a week. Those of you that attend these regularly know that it perturbs me that those folks in Richmond and those folks from around the state have decided what's best for Manassas City Public Schools. They don't know. They happen to got this one right, just out of dumb luck. But there's other districts that may be having other situations than we're having, and they may be better off going virtual or hybrid again. And the General Assembly has taken that option away from them, and I, it just irritates me to no end. We know what's best for Manassas, and they got lucky that they passed this that I believe is best for Manassas. So is, you know how I feel about waving second reading. Is May eleventh early enough? Are we okay with that? That will work? You don't need any other options?
I don't want to force the board's hand. I took these questions at you, but May eleventh, because you don't have a second meeting in May, is the time that, it can't go further than that.
Right, and I agree. I talked to Dr. Newman about this. I think that such an important decision, we want everyone, especially the board, to have time to think about it, and also give the staff time to let, the rest of our staff in.
Okay, just so they're okay with May eleventh. If they're okay with May eleventh, and this is the first reading as far as I'm concerned. Okay, thank you, sir.
No problem. Dr. Saunders, are you finished or no?
I am, that's the end.
Oh, really?
The last slide, thank you. It worked out perfectly.
Awesome job as usual. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Stevens?
A couple of questions and or comments kind of mixed together, not necessarily in any particular order. Couple of questions on SP thirteen oh, SB thirteen oh three. The only way a school division could go completely virtual next year is if the governor puts forth an order, closing schools. Would that be correct at this time?
It had language in there saying that the board, in conjunction with the Health Department, could make a decision to go virtual, but I want to say it had some language around being declared a national emergency or something.
All right, so it would essentially have to be something catastrophic, as it were. Now, with SB thirteen oh three, that allows parents to change their mind throughout the school year as to what option they want. They can go back and forth between virtual and in-person. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. And then with Virtual Virginia, the students, the MCP, MPCS students who attend, attend Virtual Virginia, they're still considered MPC, Manassas City Public Schools students? And they still participate in activities? They're still part of the ADM? Okay. And then I noticed in there that it said sped students would be serviced by MCPS teachers. So sped students who choose, whose families choose for them to stay virtual would still be serviced by our teachers?
I think Brian's going to speak.
Okay.
And while he's walking up, I noted earlier, Councilman Farah Jalahi is here. I also noticed that our mayor, Mayor Davis Younger, is here, so I thank you both for being here and for supporting us and the school system. We appreciate the camaraderie, and we appreciate the support.
Good evening. You know, ninety-eight percent of our students are on the regular standard curriculum, so they would be able to be serviced through Virtual Virginia. It's just that two percent that are on the alternative curriculum. There really isn't anything out there like a Virtual Virginia for them, so we'd have to utilize school staff to serve those children if they would choose virtual.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. This school year, right now, what is the approximate number or percentage of our students who have the in-person option who are still virtual? Do we know that approximately?
So I can tell you the number of students that were in each one, at least an approximate number. I think I said it in the notes, so hold on one second. So we have approximately eighteen hundred students in pre-K through four that selected the hybrid, and about twelve hundred and fifty that remained fully virtual. I don't know if I can do those percentages on the slide.
So it's, I'm not a math teacher, so it's pretty close to a fifty-fifty almost.
Yeah.
So it's pretty even.
Forty, fifty-nine, thirty, something.
Okay. And then jumping ahead to summer learning. We're already working on, you all are already working on choosing students who are identified for needing additional support, and those can be any students, not just our English language learners or special education students. That can be the general education population. That can be anyone. And then in the summer learning program, I believe you had mentioned this at our academics meeting, but students will still receive free breakfast and lunch, and bussing is provided as well.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And then for next year, Tier One. Tier One is the level that most students are at, correct? That's the general education classroom, and that's where our students who may have some gaps, that's where their instruction to address those gaps will be provided?
Correct.
Okay.
In the regular classroom with their teachers that see them each and every day.
Okay. And now how are those students going to be identified? Are they being identified this school year for next year, or are we going to take steps at the beginning of the school year next year to decide who needs those additional supports?
So probably both of those things. So we will look at what is happening at the end of this year. You know, what were our students doing, and what were they able to produce, and how did we work with them to kind of get some information from this year? Then ultimately, when students are back in person with us, there will be some opportunity for their teachers to assess, to kind of look at the data that we may or may not have on those students, and try to figure out how do we pinpoint what it is that students need to have.
Now, are we also going to be looking at social emotional gaps and focusing on those as well, not just those core curriculum, the reading and math, but that social emotional piece?
I'm going to say yes, but I think Dr. Brent might be behind me saying he wants to talk.
He is.
This is why on video, we can all talk pretty quickly, but now we've got to come up and down. So yeah, so I'm going to let him share some social emotional piece.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct. We're going to look at that as well. We have a steering committee as we speak now and is working with a consultant on our systems of support. That includes all those things from N H L to S E L to restored justice to P V I S, everything that we have within our school division from pre-K through twelve.
Okay, thank you. And I think that was all my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Stevens. And the rough calculation is about fifty-nine percent, if math is correct in my head, for students who are in hybrid versus students who are here, which is more than we thought would be, but still, it's a significant forty percent, a number of folks who are staying home virtually, so we need to think about that as well. Other comments to my left. Okay, well, thank you very much, Dr. Saunders and staff. Great report. We appreciate the information. Look forward to hearing more on the eleventh. Next item on the agenda, K-12 science resource adoption.
Good evening Chairman Williams, Vice Chair Seberg, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. I am ecstatic to be here this evening to share with you our recommendations for our new K-12 science resource. Dr. Leslie Jones is here with me this evening, and will do the majority of the presentation for you. She is our pre-K-12 science specialist, and she and a large team of our teachers across the division have been working since September through this process. And while I might have provided guidance and answers to questions, truly, the work and the time and effort put in belongs to Dr. Jones and our team of teachers. As I said, the resources that they will be recommending are certainly forward-thinking and provide our students many authentic, hands-on experiences, and that's certainly what we want from all of our teaching and learning, but especially in the area of science. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones, and she will share with you the committee's work, their timeline, the different steps they've taken, and ultimately the recommendation and budget for our new resources. Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Dr. Kramp.
Good evening Chairman Williams and Vice Chair Seberg, Dr. Newman, and members of the board. Thank you so much for giving me the time to speak to you this evening regarding the science resource adoption process and recommendations to move forward. Can you all hear me okay?
Okay.
When creating the 2018 science standards, the Virginia Department of Education was very intentional in focusing on scientific and engineering skills and explicit integration of the five Cs that are outlined in a profile of the graduate. In 2019, the Manassas City Public Schools STEM Committee revised the STEM plan with a focus on, with a focus on student-centered inquiry-based learning with cross-curricular integration. Adoption of a new science resource is the perfect method to empower teachers to provide deeper learning opportunities with a greater amount of student ownership and learning content. Am I doing that? Am I hitting it?
No, I'm trying to figure out where you are.
This is good, yeah, right here, right here. Sorry about that. My primary goal with this resource adoption was to end up with an outstanding resource that not only aligned to the new 2018 science standards, but also aligned to Manassas City's STEM mission and vision, and promotes inquiry-based approach to learning science. This slide gives you a nice snapshot of this year's resource adoption process. I'll wait a moment so you can read through the process. In September, emails were sent out to all Virginia Department of Education-approved science resource vendors, making them aware that we were beginning the adoption process. Along with the W-9, we asked vendors to present or submit pricing proposals, technology requirements, and answers to science and STEM-specific questions. The technology information was forwarded to Robert Sanson for approval. The science and STEM-specific questions included the following. Does the resource come with optional science and STEM kits? What resources are available for differentiation, intervention, and acceleration? If the resource is a hybrid of a physical text and an online component, we asked them to provide a brief description of each. What Spanish and dual-language resources are available? And what would professional development look like for each resource? The second step was to form a resource adoption committee. In September, staff members were invited to join the committee via email. I asked those interested to complete a Google form explaining why they wanted to be part of this process. The fifty responses I received indicated a collective passion for finding high-quality resources. Committee members were also required to read and sign a conflict, conflict of interest statement to reviewing any, prior to reviewing any vendor resources. Our committees were split into K through two, three through five, grade six through eight, and high school content. I broke the committees in this way to promote vertical alignment that's reflective of the science cumulative standards of learning in fifth grade, eighth grade, biology, chemistry, and earth science. As you can see in these slides, we had representation from each school and across many grades. We also had representation from our English language and special education departments. Division-level leadership played an integral role in supporting the science resource adoption process, and I honestly could not have done it without the team members that are on this slide. I am grateful for the time they spend ensuring each phase of the process went very smoothly. To help the process remain organized throughout the year, Schoology was used for consistent communication and committee access to necessary materials such as our rubrics and schedules. Step three, rubric development. In October, committee members were presented with a rubric that was reflective of the state rubric, the most recent Manassas City Public Schools English Language Arts rubric, and research into the best practices in science and STEM instruction. The rubric contains seven sections, including evaluator information, curriculum alignment, science content, assessment, equity, teacher support, and a section asking teachers to select their overall level of support for each resource and providing space to list potential vendor questions. Over the course of one month, committee members evaluate the products listed in this slide. Members could view all the products online or evaluate printed materials at central office. Committee members were asked to complete evaluations of all products available to their assigned grade level or make the decision not to move forward with the process. This was very important in order to gather comparative data by grade level and grade band. Committee members were asked to examine the rubric and provide feedback, including any additions, deletions, or edits to the rubric. The members chose to go with the rubric as-is. I was able to disaggregate the rubric data by grade level and by school level, meaning K through four, five through six, seven through eight, nine through twelve, as well as our SOL groups, which was K through two, three through five, six through eight, and our high school content areas. I looked for natural breaks in the data indicating top-ranked products. In January, I presented the data to the committee members along with the overall level of support for each of the top products. Committee members then agreed upon which vendors to invite for question-and-answer sessions. Committee members also worked together to finalize a list of vendor questions. In January, invitations were sent to the top-ranked vendors. And in February, we hosted vendor question-and-answer sessions via Zoom. Vendors tailored their presentations to committee questions, adding any key product information they felt was important for the committee to be aware of, while leaving time for follow-up questions that may have arisen during the presentation. Resources were also available for, available for additional staff, parent, and community input for four weeks in February. I made the decision to house the resources for public input at central office for equity reasons. There was a significant number of products to review and not enough samples to go to each school. And each sample included many pieces, including some of the STEM kits. It was important that reviewers have access to intact products and the opportunity to ask questions if necessary. Al Radford made two announcements, one at the beginning of February and one in the middle of February concerning public review. We had no one come in and review the resources. This may be due to the unprecedented times with COVID-19. At the conclusion of the question-and-answer presentation, committee members were asked to complete a brief rubric, including positives and challenges of the resource, as well as their overall level of support for the resource. Overall level of support included, I strongly support the resource, I can support the resource, I do not support the resource. Like the first round of evaluations, I asked committee members to attend all vendor sessions. I felt it was important for committee members to have an equal understanding of all products in order to participate in final recommendations. After the vendor question-and-answer sessions, committee members met to review the question-and-answer rubric data and agree upon resource recommendations. Rubrics completed during the question-and-answer provided clear front runners based on the overall level of product support, positives, and challenges. Based on the rubric data, a data-driven product recommendation was made. The product recommendations were for the product receiving the strongest overall level of support from the committee members. I reviewed all the data with committee members and asked each to complete an anonymous Google forum indicating whether or not they would recommend these products based on their rubric data. When votes were cast, eighty-five percent, eighty-five point seven percent of K through two teachers, one hundred percent of grades three through five, eighty-five point seven percent of grades six through eight committee members, and one hundred percent of biology committee members voted to move forward with accelerated learning STEM scopes. Teachers that did not vote for STEM scopes supported Five Palms Press, which is a more traditional resource with a student textbook and a supported audio for the online textbook. I would like to note that I did not vote at any point along the way. I did not complete any of the initial evaluations, nor did I complete the rubrics during the vendor question-and-answers. All data points came from committee votes. There was a hundred percent agreement for resources chosen at the high school level. Each content team also chose resources for elective courses. Discovery Education was chosen for earth science. Cengage National Geographic was chosen for chemistry, as well as ecology, forensic science, and oceanography. Pasco was chosen for physics. Savis Learning was chosen for AP Chemistry, AP Biology, and AP Physics. Bedford-Freeman and Worth was chosen for AP Environmental Science. Once recommendations were determined, committee members were asked to work together to list potential questions that would need to be considered for smooth implementation of the recommended resources. Committee members presented recommendations to the staff at their respective buildings. The presentation was via Google Slides and included the names of the committee members, a high-level overview of the process, committee recommendations, highlights of recommendation, in a Google form confirming who had reviewed and viewed the presentation, and space for any comments and questions. A Google form link was embedded at the end of the presentation. All general education, special education, and ESOL science teachers were asked to respond. At the end of the form, teachers were given the space to share any questions or comments related to the recommendations and/or the adoption process. As of today, we have a hundred and sixty-eight staff members who have responded to the form. This slide reflects the total cost of K through four STEM scope purchase. This purchase includes student digital access to STEM scopes, including STEMscopedia and the Student Journal, as well as a hard copy of the Student Journal for every student. The Student Journal cost includes cost for the journal in years one through seven. So we will pay upfront and journals will be sent annually. Each teacher will receive access to the Digital STEM Scope Platform, which houses all the instructional materials, teacher guides, and implementation guides. Teachers will have access to content across grade levels, which will support opportunities for differentiation as well as vertical alignment. The platform updates automatically each year. Teachers will also receive print copies of the STEMscopedia, which is a STEM scopes version of a textbook. I am really, really excited that every classroom will receive the hands-on inquiry-based kits for laboratory and STEM investigations. The kits include enough material for thirty students. The total cost for grades K through four resources in year one is five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, forty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Annual cost thereafter will be for enrollment growth and material replacement and replenishing of consumables. This slide reflects the total cost of the five through six STEM scope purchase. This purchase includes student digital access to STEM scopes, including the STEMscopedia and Student Journal. Each teacher will receive access to the Digital STEM Scope Platform, which houses all the instructional materials, teacher guides, and implementation guides. Teachers will have access to content across grade levels to support differentiation and vertical alignment, and the platform updates yearly. Teachers will also receive a class set of the STEMscopedia, which is the STEM scope version of the textbook, as well as a teacher copy of the Student Journal. Every classroom will receive the hands-on kits, which contain the STEM and inquiry-based investigations for every unit for a class of thirty students. The total cost for grades five through six resources in year one is eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Annual cost thereafter would be for enrollment growth, material replacement, and replenishing consumables. Additionally, we will need to purchase resources for the grade six immersion program at Mayfield in school year twenty-two, twenty-three. This slide reflects the total cost of the seven-eight STEM scope purchase. The purchase includes student digital access to STEM scopes, including the STEMscopedia and Student Journal. Each teacher will receive access to the Digital STEM Scope Platform, which houses all the instructional materials, teacher guides, and implementation guides. Teachers will have access to content across grade levels to support differentiation and vertical alignment. The platform updates each year. Teachers will also receive a copy of the STEMscopedia and a copy of the Student Journal. Each classroom will receive the hands-on kit, which contains STEM and inquiry-based investigations for every unit for a class of thirty students. The total cost for grades seven through eight resources in year one is sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Annual cost thereafter would be for enrollment growth, material replacement, and replacement of consumables. This slide reflects the total cost of the Biology strand purchases. This purchase includes, for Biology students, digital access to STEM scopes, including the STEMscopedia and the Student Journal. Each Biology teacher will receive access to the STEM Scope Digital Platform that houses all the instructional materials, teacher guides, and implementation guides. Teachers will have access to all grade levels, which will support opportunities for differentiation and vertical alignment, and the platform updates each year. Teachers will also receive a copy of the STEMscopedia and a copy of the Student Journal. For elective courses, Ecology, Enamine Physiology, AP Biology, and AP Environmental Science, every student teacher will receive a print copy of the textbook and full access to the interactive digital platform. The total cost for Biology resources in year one is eighty-two thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Annual cost thereafter would be for enrollment growth and material replacement. This slide reflects the total cost of the Chemistry and Physics strand purchases. This purchase includes, for every course listed, a print copy of the textbook and access to the interactive digital platform for every teacher and student. The total cost for Chemistry and Physics resources in year one is seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Annual cost thereafter would be for enrollment growth and material replacement. This slide reflects the total cost of the Earth Science strand purchases. This purchase includes access to the interactive digital platform for every teacher and student for Earth Science. For Oceanography, teachers and students will receive a printed textbook and access to the digital platform. The total cost for Earth Science and Oceanography resources in year one is twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Annual cost thereafter will be for material replacement and enrollment growth. The total estimated cost of the K through twelve science resource adoption is eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. One point three million was budgeted for science resource adoption. The STEM kits will require replacement of consumables for each year during years two through seven. The total for each year replacement of consumables is forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. We will budget for these funds in our annual budget process. In the coming weeks, I plan to provide teachers with digital access for the summer, including access to prerecorded webinars to help teachers navigate the sites, continue work to connect our resource with our curriculum maps and the division curriculum framework, and work with the vendors to plan effective professional development for the fall. So we are here now submitting our formal recommendations to the board this evening. And I thank you for your time.
Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Comments?
No.
Well, I'll say something.
Mr. DeMery?
The academic committee already went over all of this. And I'm just impressed with the amount of research and the collaboration we had amongst different people coming up with, with the same answers. What was it, fourteen point three in one of, I mean, that's the percentage that didn't agree with a little bit of it. But overall, I'm just impressed with, with our people and the way they came up with this. And I just thank you for all your work, board.
Thank you, Mr. DeMery.
Any other comments? I love the collaboration. I mean, the teachers are the ones who have to teach and they know it best. And I love the fact that you gave them the agency to choose what we used and that ended up being different things for different, you know, grade levels, which is, which is great. One question that came to mind, and I know it probably is not that important, but is there ever any thought about alignment between what the science teachers choose and the math teachers choose? Because I know like at the higher levels, like physics and chemistry, there's a lot of, you know, overlap between what they learn. Or is that just not relevant at all?
There, there is a lot of overlap between what they learn. And the beauty of the STEM scopes that was chosen for K through eight in Biology is it's based on the five Es, the inquiry-based process. But in the elaborate section, there is a math connection and a literary connection, a literacy, excuse me, literacy connection with every single scope. For them to integrate.
Excellent. Well, please thank the teachers for their hard work on this curriculum project. We really appreciate it. And thank you for the presentation and for your time. We appreciate your work as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Finance and Operations. FY 2021, 2022 Student Fees and Charges. Mr. Andy Hawkins.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to have our initial reading of the FY 22 fee schedule that we, for students, and to elaborate some of the changes that we are proposing for next school year. So the first change is if you would turn to page two, album, where we see athletic participation fees, we are proposing that we eliminate them, reduce them to zero from what they are now at fifty or a hundred dollar max for the family. We're also recommending, when you go down to official transcripts, currently, we charge, the first transcript for our current students is free and any additional is three dollars each. and any additional is $3 each. What we're proposing is that the current students would be free, no matter how many copies they need, or, and the alumni would stay the same. And class dues would be reduced from $60 to zero. Now, the class dues, students pay the class dues irregardless of whether they go to the event or not, whether it's the prom or to other homecoming or wherever else that the class dues pays for. Those charges will remain if you attend, if you want to participate in those activities as a student. We just won't be charging a flat fee to every student irregardless of whether they want to attend the events that are supported by class dues. Now, with the athletic participation fees, we did speak with both the athletic directors at the high school and the middle school. First of all, I believe that in the FY 22 budget, as a result of the pandemic and our uncertainty going forward when we adopted the FY 22 budget, we didn't know what FY 22 was going to be like. Seems like, so we included a lot more money in the budget, in FY 22 budget that would have normally been taken care of through fundraising or other avenues. So we believe that we've taken care of a lot of, they've included in FY 22 budget, the funds that were being used or that were being acquired through the athletic participation fees. But if it doesn't, let's just assume for some reason they're short or something like that. We will have contingency reserves available to meet that amount. So when we spoke to the athletic director at Metz, I think it was something like $7,000. And with Ira at the high school, it was something like $15,000. So, you know, roughly $22,000 is what they had received in athletic participation fees in the, back when we actually had a normal year. So we feel like we have enough funds already budgeted. If it doesn't work out that way, we will, we have sufficient funding in our contingency reserve accounts to be able to take care of any needs that the athletic department may have. Another change would be on page five. If we go to fees not eligible for fee waiver. The second bullet says reasonable charges for lost or destroyed devices, such as musical instruments and computer tablet devices. So the musical instruments were not a part of this in the prior year. We just spent a great deal of money, School Division, over $400,000 buying brand-new musical instruments for all of our students. And so we think it would be, it's a reasonable thing that if you destroy, lose your musical instrument, you'll be responsible for paying the fee to replace that device. And the next item would be on food service on page six. We have a USDA waiver for the FY 22 school year. So we will be allowed, we will have the opportunity to charge no fees for breakfast or lunch to students for the FY 22 school year. The food service department is going to get a reasonable reimbursement back from the federal government that will not affect their budget that's already been adopted. So we feel great about this of having free lunches going forward for FY 22. Long term, there's another program called the Community Eligibility Provision, CEP for short, where if your school population, over 40% of your school population receives some type of SNAP benefits, then it goes into the equation to figure out, and you can offer free lunch and breakfast to all the students. Now, all of our schools, except for Osborne, are currently over the 40% threshold. But we are still working with the calculations that in the spreadsheets from the D O E to determine whether or not it is still financially viable for the food service program to survive on the reimbursement amounts that we're going to get from the federal government through the CEP program. Based on what we're showing tonight, we'll have enough time to make a very good evaluation because next year, we'll be free through waiver with USDA. And hopefully, the following year, we'll come back with a recommendation on CEP. Osborne is very close to the 40% threshold. There's something like 36, 37% right now. So they're very close. And maybe by the time another year goes by, they'll be over the 40% threshold as well and would be able to participate in the program. And finally, one last thing, one last change is on page seven. If you go down to that second bullet, down at the bottom, it says, "All building rentals for auditorium, cafeteria, gymnasium, and classrooms will also have a corresponding, at a minimum, custodial charge with a two-hour minimum at an hourly rate of $35." That's up from $30. And that just matches, we're changing it to meet our current cost. The School Division is not making any money off of that. It's just, it reflects the salary increases that we have given to our employees and benefit changes cost to the School Division. So this just helps us to bring us even and not lose money due to rentals of our property. I think that's all of the changes. Are there any questions or concerns, comments that you'd like to make about this?
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Ms. Stevens?
I had a quick question concerning school dinners. The last time we had a regular school year, we served dinner, what was it, Monday through Thursday night?
Yes, at Osborne.
At Osborne. Um, is there any discussion of going back to that for the 2020, 21, 22 school year? And would that also be free under the USDA waiver?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Okay, so it would be free under the USDA waiver?
Yes, and we wanted to offer the program to as many families that would participate. I think we were serving close to 150 meals, dinner meals every night.
Okay, that's great.
A lot of them were to students at Osborne, but anyone from the community could go to Osborne and get a free dinner meal as long as they were 18 years old or under, they could get a free meal.
Great. Thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Any other questions? Mr. Mary?
Thank you, Andy. $22,000 for activities or sports is not a whole lot in our overall budget. But the $50 that these kids have to put out to play is a great burden on our families, on a lot of our families. Some of our families, it's not, but too many of them, it's a great burden. Transcripts, it's only $3 each. Some of our families struggle for $3. The class dues, same thing. You know, the kids struggle to find the money to do that. I think this is a great presentation. I'm so pleased you came up with it. The USDA waiver is just wonderful. Food is so integral to our education that it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing that we're doing here, that we're able to use the federal government to do this. And the, we're not quite at 40% at Osborne. I, you know, I don't know if you hope that we get to 40% or you don't. It's got to catch 22 there. But if we don't, this is the Community Eligibility Program, if that's what it was. Is that all or nothing? Or can we do it with all eight of our schools and not Osborne?
We can, we can do whatever we want. All eight, so let's just assume that Osborne doesn't get to the 40%. The School Division can still offer meals free at Osborne if we so choose, right? We just won't get the reimbursement amount back from the federal government. There are some encouraging signs. I hear news all the time about President Biden wanting to make food free at all of our schools all the time for him going forward. So I look forward to that. And I, so as he transitions into his role in the office, I think that you'll see more and more, I think this will go forward and will be a permanent thing. As permanent as the next four years, whatever that is, right? But also, I want to make another comment about the athletic participation. I think you're exactly right. You know, when we have two-thirds of our children on free and reduced lunch, we have in all of our schools, over 40% of our children receiving SNAP benefits. You know, $50 or $100 a family is a lot of money for them. And it may deter some of our students who want to participate in athletics from doing so. So I'm very happy that we're able to do this and propose this tonight.
And I'll also let you know that our coaches are going to like this a lot because their extra pay for extra duties might actually go to them now. Because I got news for you. Our coaches, a lot of their funds that they get to coach go to their kids.
Go to their family.
You know, so, and this will help out them too. And most of our coaches are not rolling in dough either. So it's good for them as well. Back to the dinner program. We'll still be offering it to adults for $3 as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. To my left, any questions or comments? No, I'll just add, I'll echo Mr. Mary summarized it beautifully. One thing I want to touch on though is food insecurity. Food insecurity is such a paradox because it's simultaneously huge, but also unseen. And there's tons of families, we know nationwide, who are struggling with that, even in our community. So I'm thrilled that we can offer, you know, our students meals for free. It's so important to their, not only their learning, but their lives and their families. So thank you, and thank you for the great presentation.
Also, one more point about the dinner program. We're always looking to expand the dinner program as feasible. You know, we've talked about having it at Metz in the past. But they're so close together that children can walk over if that's what they need to do. And you know, a lot, most of our children leave Metz or bus home. They're not able to drive home or, you know, whatever. So it's just much more viable at Osborne than maybe it would be at Metz. But I see us in the future offering a dinner program at other communities such as Weems and Hayden, some of our poorest communities, offering those services in the future.
That's great. Andy?
Oh, that's going to be, can you, all of us may not know, I mean, we know, but the dinner program describe briefly what it is so folks who are at home can understand what we're talking about.
So the dinner program is that we offer a free dinner meal every day, Monday through Thursday, free of charge to all of our students and/or anyone who's under 18 years old. It doesn't, I mean, you can be in the community, just be under 18 years old, and you'll get a free meal. And for all adults, it's $3. And it's a, it's a well-balanced, good meal, full meal. Not, it's not a snack, it's not a salad. It's a, it's a full, full course meal that they prepare every, every day.
Thank you. Mr. Mary?
Great presentation. This makes me feel good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, policies. Mrs. Lisa Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman. All right. So as I said earlier, the Policy Committee met last Wednesday, April 21st, in the conference room. We looked at 56 different policies. It was 86 pages worth of policies. Six were policy modification, were policies modified, policy modifications of V S B A policies. All of the other policies were V S B A policies directly. So the six were modifications we made, we had made previously to V S B A policies. But the other 50 were V S B A policies. Many of the policies simply required grammar updates. Verbiage was changed as far as pronouns and going from passive voice to active voice. 10 policies were updated. 25 policies were updated with cross and/or legal references. Two had only their references updated. 10 were reviewed but not updated. Three had their title and text updated. Four were deleted with three being incorporated into other policies. We discussed two proposed M C P S policies, the anti-racism policy and the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy, which are still under review and will be brought before the board next month in May. We had a couple of policies that had kind of some big changes. The one that you might want to look at is on, if you can go to page 41 of the policies, it's I G A H. It's, I think, the only policy that changed in content and in meaning. It was for the Family Life Education Policy, and it requires schools to allow parents to access printed materials for the Family Life Education Program, except those that are copyright protected. And where those documents have to be made available, they have to be made available on the School Division website. That really is the only policy that changed materially in content. Others changed wording or took out words that were determined to be unnecessary. And these will be on the consent agenda at our next meeting.
Right. Thank you very much, Ms. Stevens. Great presentation of the voluminous policies, Mr. Mary's favorite topic.
As long as you called me out on that. I think the Policy Committee is one of the very most important ones we do because it's what drives everything we do. We go back to policy. And I want to thank the Policy Committee for doing that. And I didn't, I was on it for several years. And I'm glad I'm not now because it's a lot of work. And you all did a fine job. Thank you all very much.
And one of the important things to note about the Policy Committee, well, not the Policy Committee, but the policies we have is the amount of work that's put into drafting policies, revising them, editing them, and updating them. It's not a simple process where you can simply add a word, remove a word. It has to be discussed. It has to be looked at from all angles. And I believe we, the V S B A even has to have lawyers involved to make sure that this is, that these policies are legally acceptable. They are all available for viewing, but as I said, most of them, you'll find are grammar changes and then addition of citations.
Thank you. Any other comments to my left? Hearing none. Thank you again, Ms. Stevens and the Policy Committee. We move on to the action agenda. The first item, personnel, enhanced health insurance credit. And will there be a presentation or should I just read what it says here? Oh, I can go with that.
Nobody's dropping up, boss.
The enhanced V R S health insurance credit is a new post-retirement benefit for eligible V R S 4 code retirees. The enhancement provides an additional $1 per year for health insurance costs. If approved, this benefit will be effective July 1, 2021. May I have a motion for the health credit, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the enhanced health insurance credit as presented.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Seberg, second by Ms. Marya, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the enhanced health insurance credit as presented. And we've seen this before for those at home. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, 7-0. The motion passes. Next up, new business, Resolution R 2021-04. And what I will do is read the resolution, then I'll ask for a motion so you know what you're voting on and talking about. The date of the resolution, R 2021-04, April 27th, 2021. Recognition of 133 Virginia Public School Division Superintendents as Superintendent of the Year for 2021. And the motion specifically states, "Whereas, in order to ensure the health and safety of all Virginians, school across the Commonwealth closed on March 3rd, 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and most have provided virtual instruction since then as in-person teaching and learning evolved. And whereas individual school divisions retain the autonomy to decide whether or not new instruction will continue and the format in which the instruction would be presented. And whereas stable and consistent leadership by local school division superintendents has been vital in serving children through this pandemic. And whereas school division superintendents are responsible for the health, safety, welfare, and education of each child while creating school cultures even within a pandemic that serve all children regardless of their circumstances. And whereas public school division superintendents utilize guidance from the Centers for Disease for Disease Control, Virginia Department of Health, Virginia Department of Education, local health departments, and local case data in fulfilling leadership responsibilities in their communities like no other time in their careers. And whereas local school division superintendents work collaboratively with their school boards, educators, parents, and community stakeholders in providing technology, resources, curriculum content, emotional support, and mental support, mental health support, and meals to children during the pandemic. And whereas traditionally, V A S S Superintendent of the Year has been selected via diverse panel of education associations after reviewing an individual superintendent's ability to demonstrate leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. And whereas all one hundred and thirty-three Virginia Public School Division superintendents have extraordinarily exhibited these qualities while leading their school divisions and communities during the twenty twenty-one school year. And whereas the VAS Board of Directors agreed on January seventh, twenty twenty-one, to suspend the traditional selection process determining a single Superintendent of the Year and unanimously agreed to recognize and honor all Virginia Public School Division superintendents as Superintendent of the Year for twenty twenty-one. And whereas VAS is appreciative of the Virginia School Boards Association supporting this resolution and the honor provided to each division superintendent by having his or her respective school board present this resolution to the superintendent to be recognized within the community for which he or she serves and leads. Now, therefore, being resolved, the School Board of the City of Manassas has hereby recognized Dr. Kevin Newman as a Virginia Superintendent of the Year for twenty twenty-one as designated by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, better known as VAS. So that is the resolution. I don't want to think that long again. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve Resolution R twenty twenty-one zero four honoring Dr. Kevin Newman as a Virginia Superintendent of the Year for twenty twenty to twenty-one as designated by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Vice Chair Seberg. I'll give second to Mrs. Brooks. That the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve Resolution R twenty twenty-one dash oh four honoring Dr. Kevin Newman as a Virginia Superintendent of the Year for twenty twenty-one as designated by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Di Maria?
I'm not thrilled with this. Well, I believe our superintendent should be the school superintendent of the year. These other guys are just hangers-on. And so I'm glad we're acknowledging the work you've done this year, but it should be alone. And we appreciate what you've done for us, for our school system. This has been, I've been a part of this school system for forty-five years, and this has been the hardest year we've ever had. And you've handled it with grace, and I appreciate all of your efforts immensely and to heck with all the other superintendents. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Di Maria. Other comments to my right?
Yes or no?
To my left? Okay, I'll echo Mr. Di Maria's comments. I won't echo all of them, but most of them. Don't want to diss the other superintendents. I think for me, the biggest thing is, and I talk to Dr. Newman like almost every day, is that he truly embodies what an educator should embody, which is putting the best interest of the child first and foremost, whether that's going to games or Zoom meetings or whatever needs to be done. He does it. That's why I appreciate his earnestness in looking out for our children. That's very important to us, and thank you for all you've done in this crazy, crazy year. With that, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, seven zero. Congratulations, Dr. Newman. And thank you for your service to us and our students and our families. We appreciate it. Any comments?
Well, thank you for the participation trophy that I've just received. I've enjoyed my three years here in Manassas City, not just because of the board. I feel I have the best board in the Commonwealth, but just from the efforts of all of our staff members, whether it's teachers, custodians, bus drivers, central office, it's definitely is a team effort. I feel the family atmosphere that we've created here. And hopefully, I'll be able to spend more years here. My family is, feel like we're being entrenched in the community now. And again, just thank you for your hard work because none of this that has been accomplished during this difficult year would have been able to be accomplished without the school board. So again, we're one big family. We will take this participation trophy, but next year, we'll shoot for the one and only.
Thank you very much, Dr. Newman. And with that, we have one more item on the agenda, board member comments. And since our student reps aren't here, I will go straight to Mrs. Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to everyone. We have such an amazing community, and the staff and teachers and families of our schools are really rallying together, and it's wonderful to see, and just thanks and keep it up. Almost made it through the school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Brooks. Next, Mrs. Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman. First, I wanted to give out a reminder that this month is Autism Awareness, uh, excuse me, Acceptance Month. We need to move away from simply being aware of the autistic members of our school community to accepting them as full-fledged members who are neither broken nor damaged but have a different way of thinking and acting that makes our community better as a whole. As a parent of an autistic child and as a special education teacher and as a school board member, I have the opportunity to interact with autistic individuals every day. And they're not broken, they're not damaged. They're simply different and have a different perspective on life. And that perspective is important for us to consider and think about as we make decisions. And we need to accept them no longer as marginalized members of our community but as full-fledged members whose voices count just as loudly and just as importantly as everyone else's. The next thing I wanted to address is, Andy Hawkins, your presentation got me a little bit emotional because we're going to be able to offer free breakfast and lunch and dinner for the entirety of the next school year, which is an amazing thing. It doesn't seem like a lot. But when you work with children and you have children who come to school hungry and are afraid to go get breakfast, afraid to go get lunch because they owe so much money in overdue lunch fees that you keep food in your closet, in your desk, to know that as a teacher, you don't have to do that, to know as a teacher that your students are going to come to you with a full stomach and ready to learn. That's a very emotional thing, and it's a very important and valuable thing that we tend to take for granted and not think much about. But with forty percent of our students eligible for SNAP benefits, that means that at least forty percent of our students experience food insecurity. And the last place they need to be feeling food insecure is in our schools. And then on top of that, to hear that athletic fees, transget fees, and student fees, student dues are going away is an additionally amazing thing. When you have three students in high school, that's almost two hundred dollars in student fees. Then if each of your children wants to play a sport, that's another hundred and fifty dollars. That's three hundred dollars. In today's COVID world where so many people have lost jobs, that three hundred dollars is prohibitive. Is that fair to do to any student? No, it's not. So I did get a little bit emotional when I heard all this because this is amazing. This allows so many more of our students to experience success and joy and to excel at something they really enjoy. So I have to say, I am so happy to live here in this city, to be a part of this school division that's doing this for all our students. It's an amazing thing. So thank you to everyone who is able to make this happen. Thank you to the USDA, and thank you to everyone who's putting back dinner four days a week for anyone in the community. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stevens. Well said. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank and tell everybody how much we all up here truly appreciate every Excellence Award winner tonight. It does take all of us to truly engage every student, and we don't take that lightly and we appreciate everything everybody does. Everybody here puts forth lots of effort. I wanted to just also let everybody know that last Friday, April twenty-third, I attended the Arbor Day celebration with our pre-K through fourth graders who participated in a poster drawing contest. And the theme this year was Trees Are Superheroes. And we had some superhero and super posters. It was a beautiful day, and I cannot tell you how much I enjoyed all the kids together in celebration. It was fantastic. And with that, Mr. Chair, I am done.
Thanks. Well said, Mrs. Williams. Next, Mr. Di Maria.
Thank you, sir. Andy, what she said to you is the way I wanted to say it. I just didn't do it as well. Last night, some night, we had youth salute. Was that just last night?
Yeah.
My goodness, we have some incredible children in our school district. And youth salute is part of the cream of the crop, but it's not that much different than ones that didn't get youth salute. There are so many kids that do so many great things, and they are supported by such great staff members. I, again, as I've said many times, I'm very proud and humbled to be a part of this system. We had a presentation about what we were gonna be, that Dr. Saunders gave, the senior recognition stuff, what we're trying to do for our seniors. They've been cheated, it's not the word I want to use, but they were cheated out of their senior year and part of their junior year. And we're doing not a prom, we're doing the drive-through, we're having graduation. There's so many things that this school system is trying to do for our seniors. I'm so impressed with staff and recognizing that these kids need something. You know, even if it's just a walkthrough of their building. And I'm very proud that staff is doing that. What Mrs. Williams said about our honorees and the... We have an eight-point-two percent positivity rate still. I know I'm probably preaching to the choir. You know what you're supposed to do, do it. Do your part. Let's get these numbers down so that we can safely bring our kids back to school. We're obviously, like I said, the General Assembly has decided we're bringing them back to school, no matter what our numbers are. But let's get those numbers down so that we can be as safe as possible. Do your part. If you don't want to get vaccinated, you know, that's your own decision. If you don't, then just stay home. Do your part and then some if you're not gonna get vaccinated. And if you are, get your vaccination and still do what you're supposed to do. And we all know what we're supposed to do, so please just do it so that we can get back to some normalcy. And I'd like to say to our spring sports, which are starting tonight, good luck to them. I would normally tell you to get out and support our kids, but you can't because we all haven't done our part yet. So continue to do our part, and maybe by the end of the season, we can get out and see some more of it. Thank you, sir.
Well said, Mr. Di Maria. Thank you. Next, Mr. Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to congratulate everyone who was recognized this evening. I attended the youth salute yesterday as well. And to see such accomplishment and such studious students and well-rounded individuals coming out of the City of Manassas is amazing. And I'm glad to be a part of it. And I'd like to thank everybody on the board for all your contributions to everyone's success. And also, I'd like to take a moment to thank the superintendent. You are a superstar in our eyes. I didn't get to mention that comment earlier, but we really appreciate all that you do for the school board and this community as well. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Next, Vice Chair Seberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to everyone that was recognized tonight, our businesses, our teachers, and our superstar superintendent. We are continuing with school matter updates to the City Council. And last night, we featured Jenny Dean Elementary, which included an update from Principal Kara Grasser and a student update from Osborne senior Samantha Mora. We look forward to more of these school matters as we plan to feature a different school each month. City Council meetings are held and streamed live on generally the second and fourth Mondays of the month. Also, I've visited Baldwin Elementary and Jenny Dean Elementary in recent weeks, and I'm impressed with how the teachers and staff have worked to troubleshoot issues and problem-solve to make learning better for their students, even in the dual-platform environment. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that. And then finally, I wanted to mention that Osborne High School Theater is presenting Little Women: The Musical. It's a pre-recorded virtual performance and available to stream beginning Friday, April thirtieth, through the weekend. You will find a link to purchase single or family tickets in the ribbon on the Osborne website and many other Manassas City Public Schools social media sites. So please support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well put, Vice Chair Seberg, and thank you for the presentation to City Council. We appreciate you letting the community know at large what we're doing here. And before I say anything, Dr. Newman, is there an announcement he wants to make?
Yes. I get to say more than...
It's a big night.
Mr. Hawkins, can you please stand? So, you know, I talked about the family and how we've all come together, but I can tell you from day one, from my first meeting, the one person that came to my office and always had my back has been Andy Hawkins. And I just wanted to let him know how much I appreciate him. But really, I want him to stand up because tomorrow is his birthday. And I want to wish you a very happy birthday. I hope you enjoy the time with your son. You have deserved it. And thank you for all you do for me and all you do for Manassas City Public Schools.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Andy.
I've worked for many superintendents, and, you know, I've never worked for one as good as you are. And I thank you as my brother, and I love you. So thank you. Have a good day.
Well, I can't top that, so I'll have, I'll ask for a motion.
Move to adjourn, sir.
Motion by Mr. Di Maria, second by, let's see, Mrs. Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, we are adjourned. Have a nice evening.